The Monday.
What's advising time?
Getting close. Well, I'm getting ready, students ready to register for winter. Of course, I sent them the Greek plan and then we said we'd be back 10 questions. Hey, what's wrong? All right, it is 5:30, so I am going to call the pre-meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pete.
President.
Mr. Hope.
President.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Watson.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry.
Present.
Mr. Gauz.
Present.
All commission members present.
And I'll hand it over to you, City Administrator Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. So our first item on tonight's study session is further discussion with the new owners of Adrian Mall. They asked for an opportunity to speak to you again. We have time on tonight's agenda, so we've included that. With that, I will turn it over to them. Raphael, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, you, you need to be sharing your screen.
Yeah, actually, Aaron Salazar that is on the screen should be the one sharing this screen.
Okay.
There he is.
Oh, you should be able to do that now. You can go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, so the last presentation we did, we emphasize, you know, we want to emphasize two things. Marihuana business, it's THC and CBD business is 20% of our business platform. CBD be more than 50% of that platform. Cultural exchange is a big part of our program that we just didn't have time to share with you guys. And Aaron is actually the coordinator of our program here from New York. And what he's going to explain it to you is the cultural aspect that we felt the city of Adrian should know more about it because integrate a lot with the facilities that you guys have. So, no further ado, Aaron, please share the vision with Adrian City. We cannot hear you. Can you hear? Can you hear?
Test, test.
Yes, we can hear.
Wonderful. No, yeah. My apologies, as if we haven't done this a million times already. Hi, everyone, thank you so much. My name's Aaron Salazar. I'm based in New York City. I'm a theater director and producer, and I also own a production company and a theater company called AKS Productions and Poseidon Theater Company. So I'm going to just give you a very brief presentation about an idea we had for a theatrical experience. So we'll learn a little bit about the idea of the show, but then more so over really what the whole point of this idea is in order to actually engage the community and to foster the local artists in Adrian and Michigan in general. Okay, so the idea behind this experience would be, I work specifically in immersive and site-specific work. So if you think the least pretentious way to think about that is a haunted house, that's most people's first immersive experience where you walk into the space and you are surrounded by a narrative. So this would be no exception. This would be an experience where you walk into this performing arts facility and you are within the experience. The idea behind this is called Zephyrus, the experience. Zephyrus is the Greek god of the west winds. And it's a gentle wind, so it's kind of a very positive Greek god. Also too, as I was talking to my friends who grew up in Michigan, it was interesting to kind of hear their feedback about locally in terms of like mythology and just sort of what people are into there with like book culture. I really wanted to go out of my way to make sure that this is something that would also appeal to the region and the state in general. So Zephyrus is the name of the piece. To give you an idea here of what the rest of this is, Zephyrus is a multi-sensory immersive episodic theatrical experience. It's melding theater, installation art, mixed media, music, taste and smell. The themes of the show include earth, herbal remedies, climate control awareness, community and friendship. And all of this would be located within a one-of-a-kind arts complex within WDEX. All right, here's a little backstory about the idea behind the story of Zephyrus. This is written in narrative, so, you know, a little theater. It happened shortly after the grid shut down, electricity stopped. We had to remember how to be human. Not since the Great Ice Age of 13,000 years ago, when the ancient worlds were destroyed and their knowledge muted, erased and stolen, has humanity been so close to starting over again? The comet is coming. How will we spend our time here? So the urgency of the piece comes from the notion that these people had to start all over again, and they know the comet is coming, kind of like a prophecy. So they're trying to find out their way to become one with the earth again, which the piece would be set in a forest-like setting. Kind of to also reflect Michigan. The wind blows from the west whispering the answers from our ancestors, and the earth gives us true magic and knowledge through its bounty of flowers, herbs, food and water. And then the theme of it is that they hear you Zephyrus, the god of the west winds. So that's a little bit of imaginary mythology for the piece. All right, let's move into mood. So I was deeply influenced by a lot of things that are happening in Tokyo right now. And I thought it would be kind of incredible that if within this space you walked into a forest-like setting and within that theatrically, the characters of the piece pop up and it would be a mix of theater and everything we talked about, but also something where we wouldn't apologize for the complex industrial nature so that there is this mix of like nature and industry sort of being frozen in time somewhere in the future. The venue, all right. So the reference picture here has actually been inspired by the shed, which is the Bloomberg building. That's part of Hudson Yards, and it's an incredible building and organization here in New York City. So that's what that is. So a new space for creativity and community engagement is the idea behind the actual venue. Currently named the space, a multipurpose performing arts venue with a permanent immersive theater experience for WDEX with accessible spaces for curated art exhibitions, installations, theater, music, film and dance, specifically engaging the local community of artists in a subsidized rental program. One of the things that's really big to me, aside from my professional life in the theater, I was an arts educator for over a decade, and it was really an incredible experience to foster all these young people who might not have otherwise had the opportunity. And a lot of my students have moved on to completely have careers on Broadway and in film and TV. And that is also very intense because I'm under 50 and somehow they're grownups now. All right, moving into the creatives, this is a little bit more about me and my team. My company is Alvarez Kiko Salazar Productions. We are a creatives of color who started a production company to be an umbrella over our local theater company, which is Poseidon Theater Company, that has been creating work in New York City. I put a highlight here of our most recent review from our interactive feature film we made during Shelter in Place. A critic was kind enough to say that we were leading viewers into a mysterious universe that points towards the future of hybrid entertainment. The pictures here are a mix of my colleagues, writers, our composers who work via Mexico, and then some of the actors who have been featured on Broadway and film and TV as well that have worked with me. We've been featured lucky enough with Poseidon Theater Company to be featured in the New York Times, the New York Post, the Daily News, the Wall Street Journal and Time Out New York. Here's a little bit about what AKS Productions does. So my company, we create bespoke experiences that are beyond the proscenium. And the idea behind that was, as I fell into this non-proscenium theater, what really interested me was more of the democratizing of theater and sort of taking away the notion of the arts being something elitist and really more for the community. So with the team of New York City seasoned professionals representing the deeply underrepresented creators of color in the performing arts industry, AKS Productions strives to create bespoke immersive interactive site-specific entertainment that engages, inspires and connects its audience into a world where they're a part of the story, creating a sense of urgency and community. It's a hybrid of entertainment, of art and the basic connectivity of being a group of humans having a collective experience. AKS Productions hopes to create theater as an accessible medium. This is very important to me, that should be available to everyone, both live and in the form of hybrid new technology with VR becoming huge and the demographic of young people really being drawn to that. So my idea is to lead the next team of Avengers is the nickname I give us, generating original content from creators of color. And then hopefully our goal is to foster and uplift the next generation of underrepresented artists along the way through education and community outreach, which is why this project in particular really speaks to me. So moving into community. So the two things that come together that create magic for a local arts community over the years that I've seen in the 22 years I've been working in this field in New York City is that when theater and outreach connect, then magic really, really happens. And that's where the space has been born. In the arts, as most of you know, five, six, seven, eight is a big part of what we say here. So this is kind of the breakdown of what my thoughts were in terms of how that community outreach would work. Access, which would focus on underserved POC artists, teaming up with the universities with the students who are actually working. Like I saw Adrian College has that arts management program, which I think is incredible because that generation are the people who are actually going to run the world of the arts. Without them, it's irrelevant who the actors are. So the idea is to partner up with local schools and to offer these students who are working in these degrees real-world experience with New York City professionals and Broadway-level talent in production. The education would come from educational programs actually training these young people and local professional artists working side-by-side with people from Broadway and film. I think there's a lot of opportunity for subsidized corporate sponsors and more so over real-world training, which I was a product of as a young person that changed my life. Creation would be curating programming for the local community, things that feature local talent. And then the showcase of the educational program being presentational and all part of what is the result of all this education programming. And now work, which is very important to me as well, would be the mix of, pardon my typo, the mix of hiring local university art students to work with professional talent, both in-house administratively and onstage, creating real-world training for the future. All right, hybrid is an idea of how we could make this also accessible for people who possibly can't make it to the actual physical venue. Or maybe it's, you know, fiscally not possible. So this is just a mood board of kind of what the kids are into these days. VR is really huge. We have this mixed with live performance, music, installation art, and then this generation and even more so the, the next generation really being into this hybrid of entertainment of like virtual plus live. So the hybrid, AKS, we're lucky enough to move into the hybrid of interactive entertainment with film and TV with the beta project we created during Shelter in Place called X, the Experience. So the idea is with this knowledge base, AKS hopes with Zephyrus experience to team up with the latest artists working in the innovative hybrid of interactive tech to create a truly original new form of live experience that can be accessed both, both online and in person in real time. So that way, it, it is literally the democratizing of the arts in many levels. And then this creates the next level of access to the performing arts globally while creating user engagement and brand loyalty to the actual physical space so that if they have the opportunity to, they can visit that in-house show and venue. The infrastructure idea. So this whole idea is about fusion. It would be NYC professionals meet local artists, producers, talent and more. So at the base of the team of the space, which is the venue, would be a team of New York City professionals leading local hires to empower them to be the next generation of creative team leaders, producers, administrators and performers. And the structure I broke down here would be very similar to how we work in the city, where you have me at the top, you have my producing partners, community outreach, and then within those, real-world training where we set up these locals working in their fields for success, and then they absorb the daily operations of the physical experience and the programming, still led overhead by the team of AKS. But it's really about fusion and empowerment for local, local artists. Talent would be creating space for the best of talent from NYC and LA, working in tandem with local talent from both the universities and the local art scene. And in a nutshell, that's pretty much where my head's at. So, you know, while the show is the cool thing that would be visually stunning and, and exciting and also a, a, something for people to come to who might not even be interested in any retail, the real point of it is that is really the flagship, that's the heartbeat to create revenue in order to help subsidize and fund community outreach arts programming and real-world arts training by professionals from both coasts.
Yeah, this, this program has been developed not just to be implemented in Adrian, but is a key component of what this complex is all about. And we just want to share this with you so you understand where we feel can be a beneficial impact in many areas within the community that exists today. We felt it was a good fit based in the analysis that you did of your town, and we would like to hear your opinion on this. If anybody have any question, we are here to answer.
I'll go. Yeah, um, sweet idea. As an integrated part of WDEX, I have an issue with it still. I understand 20% is a strong minority piece of, of revenue. From the looks of it, that's a great complementary business, a bunch of people getting high and going to watch a really cool production show. Can't get behind it, man. Still can't get behind it. It's just where I'm at.
Let me speak up and say that, and I, I think I mentioned this to a couple of you that a couple of weeks ago during our delicious, I had a booth and so I was sort of a sitting duck out there. Number of people came by and expressed their disinterest in the idea. And like any, anything, I, I think that I have been one of the most positive people in the room as far as marijuana goes. But I have to listen to the people in the community, and I didn't get that one person giving me the thumbs up. Now, I did have people say that they liked the idea that people from New York were interested in the community and wanted to invest in the community and we should listen. But what I hear today sounds to me like you really haven't spent enough time in our community. This might be something that works in a, in a large metropolitan area. I don't see it as a fit in a basically rural community. So I I have less interest now than I had two weeks ago or whatever.
I also have large concerns just because, you know, it was promoted as well that, that we're going to be one of a kind and that, you know, this would be the, the place to be in Michigan. And now we've just heard Chris Webber's big announcement about something very similar with a large amount of spare footage in Detroit, and there it's already breaking ground and already going. So I, you know, that's even more concerning to me as well, just because I, I just don't see it generating like that was our fear at the time. We've been saying we're a small community. How are we going to get these people to come here? You know, and, and they're basically doing not all of the same things with this, with, with what they're doing in Detroit, but it's very similar. And so that is also highly concerning, like how do you draw the people away from the big city? And I don't see that happening. I also have received a lot of feedback. And 90% of it to 95% of it is the community just says enough is enough, and they just don't, they just don't want to see anymore. And, and that, you know, there's been one or two that have been positive about it, but as a whole, the vast majority have not.
Yes, I'll go next. I'll kind of piggyback on some of, some of the comments that have been said, but you know, like Commissioner Sherr said, he and I were one of the ones that, that initially got the talks going to opt into their new law. I was very supportive of it, still am supportive of any partners we have in town. I think that are all done a fantastic job, whether it be how they conduct their business, the aesthetic look from the outside. But with that being said, I think that we need to pivot our attention to, to different economic development when it comes to what we want to bring to the city of Adrian. Because like Commissioner Sherr said, you know, he was a, you know, being a sitting duck there. I, I have a business where I talk a lot of average folks, good, good folks, and they let me know the last two weeks what they thought about that. And so it's our job to listen to the public. And I, and I'm listening loud and clear, they don't want anymore. And so we've sold a lot of property. We've developed a lot of land. Flurries, big expensive building backing the tax, those are great. But now I think that we need to turn our focus on to different kinds of economic development. Again, I still support what we did in 2015. I'll back that up to my last meeting, but uh, the folks have said that enough's enough, so.
It's really wonderful that someone is interested in developing Adrian Mall. I love to hear that there are ideas being thrown out there, but I'm hearing the same things of the rest of the commissioners are hearing that we we're, we're done with developing inside the city with marijuana. It's enough, what we have.
Everyone knows I'm on the campaign trail right now trying to get reelected, but I haven't sought out the comments, but they've come to me and anybody who's talked to me face-to-face or by email or text message, they've said enough is enough, and they don't want to see anymore. That you feel like as, as we've talked before, less would be better if, you know, as opposed to more being better. I can't get behind it either.
Now, picking, picking back on Commissioner Gordon's comments, like even people that were supportive that were in this building, oh, are you done? I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm done.
Okay.
That's fine.
Commissioner Gordon, yeah. The people that were supportive of it in 2015, that, I mean, because the majority of them were supportive of it when we had those meetings. Those, they're contentious. They're even off the bus. They say enough's enough.
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, so that's where I'm at. Even the people that are, they were full fudge ahead, that were, that were lobbying commission to, hey, get in front of this so we can get the big players, the good companies, right? They're up, they're on the bus either now, you know, anymore, so I'm just listening to what the folks said.
I'm concerned that a project of this magnitude could hurt the small marijuana retailers that we already have.
Yeah, a lot of good providers and that.
There hasn't been one that's been a bad app.
Right.
And I don't want to do anything to hurt any of them. And they came to town to invest in our community and be a part of our community, and I don't think we can turn our back on them in favor of some big, big project.
But I do appreciate them bringing this to us as an opportunity, but it's only really a free way here in the economy. So it's not, it's just instincts, of course.
That's a good point. We have an expressway that comes here, so that really hurts the number of people that we can draw to any big venue.
People that are not from here and they come here, they, it's like it's farmland in a city, boom, I know where.
All right, you've heard what the commissioners have to say. I mean, we, we planned about a half hour for, for your piece of that. We do have other things to get on to here this evening. Do you have any last comments or questions? We'd be happy to entertain that.
No, it's completely fine, you know, if, if it doesn't work for Adrian, we completely understand. It's just that it's been an incredible experience to present the concepts to you guys and understand the psychology behind of your community and what is the priority of your community. And it's simply that the project doesn't fit that area. You know, and we just, we are committed to the state of Michigan, and hopefully you guys can experience this in some other areas of the state that we are looking into it. But it has been incredible to understand what the community, or at least your voters valued. And obviously, the state of Michigan is a large state, different areas has different priorities. And that's just happened not to be one of the priorities for this community right now, and we respect that. But at least you know that this is out there, you know? And if there is ever an opportunity that will fit, we'll look into it again, but we're moving forward into catering to other communities within the state that has shown interest to be part of this. But it has been a very informative experience for us to understand how you guys think and what you guys value, and what it has been, the Marihuana experience in your community. And for that, I'm, I'm grateful. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next item for discussion is refuse contracts. As you may recall, we have two separate contracts, one for downtown trash collection and the other for residential trash. We moved up the expiration date last year on the downtown trash to align with the residential trash. That will expire, I believe, June 30th of next year, so I'm trying to get ahead of this. Trying to think about what we want to include in an RFP that for trash collection services. We have a, oh, we had a chance to see it today, though we have a brief survey that we drafted as well. Bring those questions up on the screen if you didn't have a chance to see them when I sent them around earlier today. But the idea is to start thinking now so that we're ready next year to bid this out, get the options, get out that we want to have. In the, so I think Matt's going to lead us in the discussion tonight. Go ahead, Matt.
Like Greg mentioned, we're just trying to get this out here in front of you guys. This is a big contract. This is at the top of everyone's minds in the, in the community, it seems like, trash. So just trying to give you guys a heads up and see what changes you guys would like to see. We put together a survey for the community as well, like Greg mentioned. You guys can go through that and let us know if there's any changes. But this will be a very, very large contract. It'll hold all of our residential collection, our recycling, hopefully bulk trash collection, our yard waste pickup and our downtown collection. So we're trying to do everything in one giant contract to hopefully get the price down a little bit. We are kind of expecting a price increase this year. We've been with Stevens for the last, well, at least five years. So we're expecting a little bit of a price increase. But we're, we're also wondering some of your opinions on adding this bill to the taxes as well. So if, if you guys want to kind of open it up for discussion in there and, and ask any questions you'd like, we're just trying to get some feedback so we can get the survey out and get some bids, get, get some bids back in, so.
Matt, does this include recycle?
Yes, it does, yep.
I'm saying that's a, that's something to think about as we go it out. What we're getting right now is not really a legitimate recycling effort. Being collected, not necessarily recycled by that contract. And if that's something that we want to have in fact happen, then that should be one of the options that we see.
So on that note, I, probably about two years ago, so I reached out to our contractor and asked what is going on with the recycling? Where does it go? Because I was getting a lot of questions, and the response to me was the recycling gets picked up and it is sent to a Um, the recycling gets picked up and it is sent to a um. Uh, pretty much a a factory that supply, it gets supplied heat for, so it gets sent to an incinerator and that supplies heat for the factory. Um, so he says, the the old form of recycling as we all thought it was, where you turn a cardboard box into. Another sheet of paper, uh, he says that is in the past and this is what most recycling plants do nowadays. Um, but that was a conversation I had with the contractor about two years ago or so.
I think, I mean, I would assume that's a cost prohibitive measure by the the current contractor to 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 take care of it, I mean, I would assume we'd have to pay a premium for. End of the stream recycling, um, and and I think we need to make sure that. We get that option, but. You know, if the if the goal is is to not send stuff to the landfill, this is also accomplishing that goal, so. As much as I wanna recycle too, if this is keeping it out of landfill, I'm. Okay with that, uh, I I'm not sure how much a premium I wanna pay for true recycling of my refuse. Um, I i- in on that vein is, I think Commissioner Help brought up totes for everybody, um, there's there's. I think there's something to that, of getting things tidy and neat and uh, you know, the the night before. Rolling it out and uh, keeping critters out of it and things along those lines, um, I thi- I think there's definitely something to that and I'd like to see what that looks like. Dollars and cents.
Yeah, and every progressive city has totes, I think the totes totes also, when you only have a can with a lid on it. It 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 combats trash and rodents and and animals getting in it. Uh, you, Matt talked about the every year spring bulk cleanup. That can be put in the bid also, so we're not getting hit with the bill just based on tonnage, um, so we get the price, this is a. We did when, you know, we did it the last contract, it was pretty contentious because we, I wanted some things and. Nothing but I wanted some things and 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 I ended up losing that one because we didn't bid it out at all, you know, but we got a good price on it. But in my opinion, I think we got, on the back end of that, we got. They made up for it when it comes to uh, bulk spring cleanup, you 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 know, we did, so. Um, totes are big for me, I think that, you know, I have one, I did pay for it, uh, I think it just keeps things clean. Um, and and and, you know, like a lot of cities, they require you to have a can with a lid, not just a can too, so. Uh, I love my tote.
Well, and and we're really trying to take that initiative for revitalization and, you know, blight and that's. One of the easiest and quickest ways to to help in that battle is is the totes, I feel.
I'm just gonna, can somebody explain how it would work if if um, the bill was added to our taxes, is it just divided up? In half?
I still, yeah, I was curious about that too.
Well, I I assume it would go on once a year, right, Matt?
Yeah, I I believe the plan was to put it on, um, probably in the summer taxes or, I mean, it doesn't matter to us which which one we put it on, but. Um, I think it would just be one time a year.
There's there's a there's a tax bill, which I believe is the summer bill that has the municipal chart design and. I mean, what do what do we pay in postage just to mail out the bill separately, Matt?
We we pay ten thousand dollars a year in postage.
I I would love to have it go on the bill, because I I am one that um, we get that and it's like, we, I feel like we just paid it. And then I have, my husband has not paid it and we are on the late tax bill thing and. Like, we just pay that, but it's when it comes every three months, you kind of forget. That, oh my god, three months ago, it's already passed.
Yeah.
So now there's another bill, so I would love to have it on tax, but I am not in favor of requiring totes. Just because I help, I assist my elderly neighbors behind us, they cannot take out their current garbage. Um, hardly unless it's in little tiny little country market or Meyer bags, for them to drag a tote to the curb. There's, there's just no way, there's no way they can do that, so I do think that there needs to be. Allowances for people who maybe are elderly or or they, you know. Maybe their driveway or their area isn't amenable to having a tote, it's gonna tip over. Um, even my street is on a little bit of an incline and I worry about my recycling tote tipping over before the morning. So I never put it out the night before because if a big wind catches it, it's over, it's fallen over because it just tips. So there's more of an issue. Um. So I I think the totes are great if you want them, but I would not be in favor of having them as required.
And I I I'm, I'm with Commissioner Watson on on the fear of how expensive that could be for true recycling. And, you know, as long as it's not going to the landfill, and I think that is the. The misconception or the, what what a lot of us thought, you know, wh- when we heard, well, it's not truly being recycled, I think we all thought it was still going to the landfill. So that was good to know, Matt, that they're saying that it's not, and you know, and where it's going, but I, you know, I I'm just. I don't know, I'm hesitant on making that a a very high hefty cost when it comes to true recycling, if it's. If it's something where at least it's saving the environment and it's being used for another purpose, even if it's not true recycling.
I I would like to know the cost of true recycling, I guess.
Yes.
When. I'm recycling, I'm thinking I'm getting through recycling, I guess, or any of our. People are recycling, thinking they're getting through recycling, and to hear that it's being burned, um, what is the secondary? Gases that are coming from that, burning it, et cetera, is that? Not good for our environment too, so what's the difference between getting the landfill and burning, I guess, I I. I don't wanna get too crazy about the science, I just wanna know.
I've been getting a lot of questions lately, and I'm sure all of us get them from time to time, about. Bulk, not not the bulk recycling, you know, air, spring and fall or whatever, but. What about the sofas and mattresses piled up on the front porches of houses around the city or dumped? In a field by an abandoned factory up on Michigan Street, and isn't there something we can do about it? And I said, well, that from a visual standpoint, that ought to be easy pickings for for code enforcement. But the fact of the matter is, and then and then the comeback is, well, they could put it out on the curb. And call Stevens on Monday night and give them their credit card number and it would be gone the next day. And the, you know, and then the answer to that is, a lot of the people who are in that situation don't have credit cards. And so to expect them, you know, how do they get rid of them, I guess, basically is the question. And and part of the conversation has led to an idea that, and I haven't thoroughly flushed it out, but. You know, could we? Cover our costs, but have the, you know, the mattresses and the and the. The sofas and that kind of stuff, just picked up on a weekly basis. As, you know, Stevens goes by and. Bait that, the cost of doing that, I mean, it's it's, you know, you're showing, probably throwing a dart at a dartboard to try to figure out how much that is. But I think we'd be able to clean up the look of our city. If we in fact could get that stuff cleared away week by week as people are cleaning out their house or whatever. And make it go away and and put enough of a bill on the the, you know, on the tax, tax bill. Make that happen. Just throwing it out as an idea, because I don't know how we're gonna get rid of. The mattresses and the and the sofas and the stuff that's on on the porches all around town.
Well, is that accepted on the annual pickup?
But they call Stevens, but they don't have a credit card, so how do they pay Stevens to pick it up? And that's that's the issue, I don't have a problem with the five dollar fee, I think the five dollar fee is more than, more than fair. But if you're in a situation where you can't afford. Or you don't have a credit card. You don't have an option.
Well, you can't have matches on a porch anyways.
Well, you, but they, we do have, we do have mattresses sitting on the porches. You can go up and down any street on the east side almost and and see that problem. I have no idea, like I said, I haven't.
I think it's an interesting s- problem to address, and I mean, there's there's probably a solution out there, and maybe paying fashion city hall somehow could work.
That could be.
I don't think putting the burden on everybody all all year long.
See, and that's the prob- that's the problem that I've got with it, not everybody should have to pay. For everybody else's trash, they ought to be paying enough for their own and and take it. Um, I'm sympathetic to the elderly people who can't move a tote around. Uh, totes work really well for our family, but that's not true for everybody either, so. Finding the perfect example or the perfect solution, um, I think i- is somewhat difficult, but. We got, we got time, we need to noodle this thing a little bit and see what we can come up with. I think what Gordon is saying is really interesting, because there's a lot of people who. Throw a ton of stuff on the curb once a week with no intention of effort. Calling Stevens and paying for it, truth is just thrown out there, expecting that somebody else is gonna take care of. Their trash, so to speak. Um, I know that Glenn Preston keeps an eye on that. Um, but I don't know exactly how he handles, so I think.
We call them in once a week to Stevens and they pick them up and then they build the property.
You do, you do build it, okay.
That's a potential solution.
Which, I guess.
Yeah, then. Paid and then they go out with taxes, you know, when we do those resolutions once or twice a year. That's, many of those are those tragic those.
Well, and and to Commissioner Roberts' point, even with the totes, I remember even with the uh, spring bulk cleanup. And actually helped a few neighbors because they could not get. The items that they wanted out there for the spring bulk cleanup out, let alone a tote tote, but I mean, they couldn't get. These larger items out, like they needed help, that might be what you're, we're also seeing, because at times I do believe that is true. That sometimes you're seeing things on the porch because they necessarily. Just don't have the capability to actually get it out as well, I I do think that does happen.
Yeah, and if we're gonna find a solution to those kinds of things, and see, in my mind, we're talking about attacking blight. And blight, I think, comes in two forms, we've got the stuff that's in the, in in the apartments, and we're gonna get that with, you know, the inspections and. Make sure things are up to code. But from a visual standpoint. You know, people drive around, the blight they see are these porches that are covered with trash, or, like I said, you go down Michigan Street. Now toward, out toward Dean. There're just piles of stuff that that haven't, that haven't gone anywhere and they get, they just keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger. So.
This is one of the property owners' responsibility, why is that our problem?
Because nobody's, I don't, I can't answer that question, I don't know whether.
Somebody owns that property.
Somebody does own the property, but are they being cited, is, you know, it's glad out there, you know, ticking AM and and getting it picked up. I agree that it's not our, shouldn't be our problem, but it is our problem. It is our problem, and also, Glenn's friends, well, just because it looks like. Oh, it looks bad.
Sure.
Okay, but anyway, Glenn spends a lot of time, once a week, driving around looking for these problems. When it seems like Glenn could be spending his time. Better doing something else, but he knows that this is a problem because every week repeatedly this happens. So. Yeah, you say, why is it our problem, there's landlords that. Are creating this problem, but it is a problem.
Are they dumping it on their own property or, I feel like I. It looked like to me that somebody dumped. Something on somebody's empty. It wasn't their property where it was dumped.
Yeah, there's two separate issues, those relates to stuff that's left in the right of way and stuff that's left on private property. If it's in the right of way, Glenn can go around, it does go around once a week, call Stevens and pick it up, if it's on private property. We gotta go the extra step of getting a court order to be able to go in there and clean it up.
And it wasn't there, it was in the first place, somebody dumped it there.
Yeah, many times.
That's the risk of owning and it making a lot, like, that's that's part of it. And 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 I mean, or, no matter how you ended up with it, you made the choice to buy that piece of property.
But, but think about it, Brad, you've got, and I I don't disagree with you, it is, it should be the owner's or landlord's problem. But when somebody dumps something up on the Jefferson School lot.
Uh huh.
We know who owns it, what are we gonna do about it, what what, you know, what it? Thing, you can bill people that things go unpaid, I I mean, I I wouldn't wanna be in collections down at City Hall because. They got a handful of of stuff that they've gotta take care of, but yes, I agree.
Yeah, but isn't the process in place that we've got a qualified attorney on the screen right there who's got a lot of traction in court? That can make these things go, make these things happen, where just because this 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 landlord i- is difficult. Excuse is gone, like. Why, why, why are we trying to figure out how to address these matters when those processes are in place, if they're followed?
I I'm willing to listen to the recommendations of city staff as to how that's, how do, how do we go get this, how do we get this handled?
And maybe that's a focus of inspection for a month, like, hey, man. Month of January is porch trash month, let's get it cleaned up.
Well, as it, as it relates to the to the trash contract issue, you know, just like when we did the bulk.
Yeah.
Pickup, we got rid of a lot of that, and, you know, I think that's how we get started on this discussion, is that if we had. More available options for bulk trash pickup, there would be less dumping, I I mean, when it's impossible. Or difficult or expensive to get rid of bulk items, people take them and it's not just, you know, around town, they'll take them out in the country and dump them on their own site.
Academy Road, you know, that's famous for being a dump site.
And and so do we want, in looking at the trash contract, to have some. Facility in it or an option at least for facility in it where we get more bulk trash, trash pickup. On the theory that we're gonna have less of this kind of dumping issue as a result of that, because there's an easier way to get rid of it.
Do you also think that by doing it more often, it just won't be as quite. Quite as hefty as a bill, I mean, plus we've been lumped it all in, that's what we're exactly looking at, right? Now, so my question, I guess, for Matt is, if we were to look at putting this all in one package. What if all of a sudden the bulk pickup? Is is a higher amount, like, you know how that's happened before, like, where we think we've a lot, like, we we think we're under a certain amount, and then all of a sudden. Bulk is much larger than expected, and then we're gonna have that added on as well, or, you know, you know what I'm saying? So how how are you looking at it with that, I guess, Matt?
Should be part of the contract.
That's how I feel.
We're not, we shouldn't get any surprises, because if we bid out in the contract, then they should be conservatively giving a number to the city and saying, all right. Worst case scenario for spring bulk every other year cleanup, this is, this is what, we're bidding to pay for that, so.
Cause that's my fear, exactly that, that we're, that we would do this and enter this agreement, and then all of a sudden they're like, oh, that was a lot more to. To that whole trash pickup, and now you've gotta pay us more.
Like Matt said, it's it's the biggest contract in the city by far, I mean, and you know what? What we do, Matt, we do a three or five year last, I think we did three, right?
We did a five, actually.
Five, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, so I mean, that's, I mean, so if you get a vendor that comes in and 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 you bring players to the table. They got five years of guaranteed revenue coming in, so then they're gonna give the most best price, and then, you know, and so. I don't think we'd go by tonnage there, Matt, I mean, exactly, we would, we should put in the bid if they're gonna.
No, you're you're exactly right, yep, so, but like like Alan said, um, they would just give us a very conservative price, I mean. Um, so this year, this past year, we paid a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars for bulk trash collection. They're gonna come in and say worst case scenario, you know, we're gonna charge them two hundred, and it's just gonna be in everyone's monthly bill. Or, and and their tax bill, um, so no one's gonna really see it, but we are paying for it.
And we'll go on tonnage, because if that's the case. I wanna go back to totes, real quick, um, I guess I'm confused on, you know, Chris Roberts, like, when it comes to like. Cause I don't even know what, like, what do people do with the trash, they don't have the tote now, it's in the garage or?
Bag, in my garage, and then every Tuesday morning, so tomorrow morning, before I walk tank. I'll go grab my black bag and I'll take it out to the curb.
I'm interested to hear. These solutions that the service providers have, because, yes, those big totes, they're heavy, they're bulky, they get caught in the wind and so on and so forth. We assume there's options, I mean, because we're not the only city with elderly, or we're not the only, I mean, so, I mean, let's like, let's explore it.
And most vendors, if you opt into a all-toed city system, like, they, you actually get a better price, because then they can put that. Attack that arm on it, what they do for recycling, they can just snatch it, dump it in there, so they don't have two men, manning a truck, they only have one, and so. That's what, like, it comes to, like, you know, they they have to, you know, I don't know who does them, all of Stevens does them, they have the arm that grabs it. Throws in the bag, shakes it, back down, the guy puts it back to the curb.
Did allow for people to act it. It wasn't, it's not in everyone, it's, you had to add in for a tote. Otherwise, they still get to put their coverage out in.
I would think a, an elderly couple, they don't create a lot of tracks, so maybe they can just have a smaller tote.
That would be a possibility, if there are smaller totes.
Yeah, I think you're right about that. They don't need a ninety-six gallon tote, they can use a forty-five gallon. Well, what, I think your point is, let's get some recommendations. Recommendation from Stevens or who are the companies that are bidding it and more than just Stevens, I hope. It was all something to think about.
Let's go back to the, so that was one thing, but then also putting it in our tax bill. So how, I know, I am for it.
You too. Yeah, absolutely for it.
I think it's much better than paying that, especially now hearing what we pay, you could be sending that out anyways. What a savings for our city, not.
And I, I would imagine there'd be less people on that pool that forget to pay their.
Oh, a huge percentage of them will be paid by escrow companies.
So that will help with the county.
Ten thousand dollars, that could be a win-win there.
I think a lot of people would honestly prefer it, see, just be in their escrow, not paying that bill every three months to be perfectly honest. I know all that's why, however we prefer it.
And I'm telling you, we're complaining about trash and yards and up against houses on some of our, you know, it's because they're getting trash getting ripped up, it's blowing, it's everywhere. Yeah, totes fix that. Love my tote.
When the tote gets knocked over, it's a
That's a couple of times I was scared too. Yeah, yeah.
It's a big tip.
So is that enough direction for?
Uh, yeah, that's helpful. Any, any thoughts on the survey? Do you want to see that? Did you get a chance to look at it?
I looked at it briefly, I would, I mean, it was okay, I don't know, maybe there's a couple of things to add to it.
Yeah, I would really like another chance. I, I only glanced at it today at work, so I'd really like a chance.
And just remember when we talked about
I want to know who is going, how is it going? Is it going in their tax bills? Because I would really want to make sure that it's only going to people.
I am sure of that.
And we're talking about like, will it be totes, will it be spring cleanup, will it be anything, it's like, you know, people think about added cost, that we do add a tote, that goes to the landlord, not the renter, so, um, because the majority of landlords pay the trash bill anyways, so.
The copy, the, the survey, I think, closes at the very end, a little box for comments. I think that's really important, that people have an opportunity to make those comments and be, that we read them and take them into consideration.
Well, if you have thoughts on it, you can follow up with us maybe next week or so, for sure. All right, so there's nothing more on that item. Uh, the third item I asked to have on the agenda, which is what we're now calling Community Revitalization Coordinator, formerly known as Blight Coordinator. Trying to put a positive spin on this.
I like it.
Put the job description, which is the same, it hasn't changed, except that title, uh, in packets, again, just a reminder. What I would like to do is move forward with this position. Uh, you know, we've been vacant in the Community Development Director position for basically a year and a half or more, and so there's plenty, plenty in budget to fund this position right now. We think about what we're gonna do about filling the development director. I think paying for the buck, if we can find this person, you know, that's always the challenge, is finding a person with the skill set and the commitment to the community that we need, but if we can find him, I think we'd add a lot to our code enforcement effort. Unless there are strong objections, I would like to try to move forward with posting that and try to hire that position.
What's the salary range?
I just, that's my question. It is in the high forties to mid fifties. Always, we did score at a compensation commission, should have brought those numbers. Oh, that Heather's on, she's on tonight. It's in that range.
The, there was one item in there that, what, what's the system that we use to? Um, was that a required or recommended that the person have experience with that? If I read it correctly, it was required and I thought, how many people are really going to have that experience but know how to use Excel? And, I mean, I've never seen this program, but I use various programs at work and I probably could kick it up.
BSN is a trade kind of software, yeah. So I think people in that arena would have exposure to it, yeah.
Maybe we can certainly add to that whole point. Desirable or highly desirable.
I just didn't know.
We could separate it from the other kind of software programs that we have discussed. Uh, it is particular to local government, but it's critical to that position. It takes a long time to learn it and to really learn it well, and so we have somebody with absolutely no experience of that kind of.
I have a crazy outside the box idea and and maybe I shouldn't be talking about this in public, but.
Wow.
Well, let's go, yeah.
No, it's just a suggestion. Greg just said it, it's, it's very difficult to understand that system and to get, you know, get privy to the codes and all the, just the, just the the, the outreach to the community, because, you know, to get that person up to speed when it comes to relationships. Um, that's why I wanted to ask about the salary, because again, I, I think that'd be, is it easy to replace to hire another Jake Rendell? And to promote our most experienced code enforcement officer that knows the system, knows communication, has the relationships into that position without obviously taking a pay cut, clearly, right? But, and then hire another code enforcement officer to get on the street and and, you know, and keep Glenn in the office.
Honestly, I think it's scored below the code enforcement officer position.
That's, that's why I asked.
That's, I mean, I'm certainly thinking outside the box.
I mean, because, I mean, because like Greg said, get somebody in, he understands that program and just the code. And just, I mean, because let's be, Glenn knows, when it comes to that department, he knows more better than anybody what who's in town, who's the trouble people, who's the, the good landlords, who's the good owner occupied, who's got the building buildings commercially? And and so it makes sense to, for us to escape that process a little bit. Because obviously, you know, we're not, obviously, we want to compensate them as, 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 as easy as fit. And then hire another guy that, in my opinion, is, is a, is a star coming up in the city when it comes to code enforcement. That's just my idea. It's easier to train somebody to go in there and follow a code and say, they don't have a handrail and 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 their porches fall apart. Singles are falling apart here or this and that, is just go by code, everybody to understand all the, the technology part of it. And and knowing who the players are, who the bad players are and and so on.
I, I get that, but part of this, um, community revitalization is to put the connections with Habitat and Finesse and Rotary. As our current code enforcement officer, is, is he going to be able to make those connections? That they want to make those connections? They want to go and find grants and whatever else that we want to help people who, who need help.
I, I will say, I thank you for making this a more positive sounding, you know, but I know Greg and I have talked about it. And I, I know there's been other conversations between commissioners, just, you know, we don't want this to be like a negative, it's like with the Blight Coordinator. Like, I, I really like the Community Revitalization Coordinator, like it, that, that's, that just really is showing that we just care about the community, we're trying to revitalize it instead of it looking always like a punishment. And, and that we cater, I, I'm just, thank you very much, I very appreciate about that.
Um, let me ask a question, do, um, you have an idea if there are any people on staff uh, that would be interested and qualified for this job or is this gonna be an outside hire in your mind?
Um, I don't specifically know. I, I mean, obviously, everything is open to internal candidates as well. That's how we found Jake and we would never have predicted that we would have found him in the D W, but we did and we're very glad that we did. So who knows who might be there that has a skill set that we're not necessarily aware of, but it's interesting.
So is, does this job, will this job be used on that revised or finalized, but the new online?
Yeah, I would suspect, I would expect that this person will be monitoring that traffic on behalf of the the co-officers.
Yeah, I, I still get complaints about input going in and never hearing anything coming out. And I know that the way that, at least my understanding of the way this system is designed, that a citizen puts something in, uh, it gets sorted out, I don't know whether Michelle does it or who, who does, um, sends it to the right department. But it never gets reported back out unless that department has something to say about it.
With a, with a comment and sometimes the comment can be, you know, utter investigation or you know, with code enforcement issues is a long timeline.
Sure.
Ultimate resolution many times. You know, you can't leave them open all that time, so I think you can get a resolution, that is what I'm gonna term that.
Well, and I don't even think, from what I've heard, so I don't know if this is what you're, you've heard, they just don't get any response at all. So they don't even know if it first, they don't get one to anyone or like there was any, like, I, I would like to, you know, that, I think that might be the concern Commissioner or else is having, it's just, you know, thank you, we have received this, we will make sure, you know, some kind of a reply.
Well, I, I, actually, I, I've heard that the reply, at least the initial reply has been pretty good, at least saying acknowledging that the complaint hit and was being referred, but nothing after that. And, you know, it had, it, it made its way in, but it never made its way out again.
You know, to, to your large point, yes, that is part of what we hope for.
Well, it's your comments, so.
I would like to move forward with the revitalization.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, I like the idea, Alan, of you thinking, you know, outside of vice. I, I still think we need someone who's in the office, who's able to make those connections, able to put people, businesses and corporations who are ready to help them.
I like your idea a lot. And I can't speak for Glenn, and I wish Glenn were on the call. Years ago, Glenn did
Citywide, City Pride.
Citywide, City Pride. And he did a really good job of it until he basically got overwhelmed. And that's when they added, um, the rental inspections to his job, and Citywide and City Pride went away. So I think that Glenn does have that skill set. I, I just, I'm ready to hit the ground running with this.
There is a problem with the video.
Thank you. Um, and so I, I just think that he could, I, I have confidence in him that he can get the job done when it comes to connecting people to the right moving pieces. Um, but again.
Okay, well, and as we go through the process, you know, I mean, cer- certain things are not, are, are available to us, you know, and may be necessary for compensation. We did go through it twice.
We're trying to jump.
Yeah, who knows, yeah. I mean, the, the scoring criteria that we have, that came from M M L back in the day, you know, give weight to certain sorts of things, right? If you're supervising people, if you're in an unpleasant work environment, things like that get you points that wouldn't necessarily apply to this position. So it, it suffers from some of that. We may have to look at it again later on. Anything else on that? Okay, well, there, that's all I have for the scheduled items.
Are there any other items that any commissioners would like to discuss? All right, so at this time, we will have public comment. We will begin in-house first for any public comment. So there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address when we are finished with public comment in the chambers, we will then move to Zoom.
Kim Ramos, four twenty-two South Winter. If you've heard from me numerous times, I know you missed me last time. But as I said, as far as refuse, they definitely take some time to consider your options and, um, how much it's gonna cost. Sometimes the cheapest option isn't the best. Some spring cleanup would be useful and I'm pretty sure numerous types of recyclables are worse for the environment, burned than buried. I know that's not true for all of the recyclables, but numerous of them are. So I do hope that you guys take a nuanced look at this and don't necessarily just go for the cheapest option just because it's the cheapest option. That's all for now. I'll plug your mark in the meeting.
Eric Kennedy, thirteen thirty-eight West Molee. Uh, love the trash idea, love the totes, I appreciate the, the light remediation. But I will say, uh, I think it's important that the city looks in the mirror before they look at their residents. And what I mean by that is your parks are terrible. Uh, there's a tire sitting in a stream under a bridge at Tressel Park for over two years. So before you start judging residents on mattresses, I suggest you take care of your own house.
Hearing no more public comment in city chambers, we will now move on to Zoom.
Uh, Ken Tokars.
Ken Tokars, one ten South Locust.
I guess I wanted to talk about this proposed Phoenix project that they're the county's looking at in the northwest, or I'm sorry, the northeast quadrant of the county. Um, I'm kind of appalled that the city has not been more vocal, um, about this project. Something like this should be put in, um, a centrally located area such as the county seat. And I think you guys should be up in arms that they are considering putting it in the northeast corner of town. It's more likely to serve instead of a Hudson or a Morenci community member. It's more likely to serve a Washtenaw or a Monroe County resident. Um, Kim Murphy is making claims of hotels. Um, we don't know if those hotels are gonna be built here. Those hotels with the location could be built in Washtenaw or Monroe County. Um, yeah, I'd like to see it in the city of Adrian, but I'd also like to see you guys get rid of Heritage Park. Look how much money we could save. It's already got softball fields, it's got baseball fields, it's got, um, soccer fields, it's got trails, that would be a great location for it. Another option that the county didn't consider is putting like a hockey rink in Hudson and putting a pool in Adrian. Um, the other thing too is, and I think that you have to look at it as in terms of, you've all heard of Amazon. Amazon went out and they solicited from communities, they're gonna spend X million dollars, bring jobs to their community and they saw what the community would input. The county didn't do this in this bid process. They did it secretive and in private and they picked the location. Why didn't they give Adrian an opportunity to say, hey, you know, we're willing to ask our voters to pitch in four million dollars if you put a pool over here or you put the whole complex over here? Really don't think you guys are doing your job. Um, I did get an email back from Commissioner Roberts, very disappointed that she would even think to consider that I am suggesting make, putting another piece of property that's non-taxable. I mean, Commissioner Roberts, you just approved putting, um, an animal shelter that is not gonna generate any run of revenue and you're gonna compare that to a thirty-five million dollar complex and ask me where I stand on taxing. and you're going to compare that to a $35 million complex and ask me where I stand on taxes? I think you need to get your priorities straight and start looking out for the people of the city of Adrian. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, and our regular meeting will begin at 7:00 PM. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for October 4th, 2021. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Present.
Commissioner Hell.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
Under Communications, C1 Finance, is the August Revenue and Expenditure Report. Are there any questions or comments, commissioners, on this report? Moving on, may I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move, support, Gauss.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hell with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor He.
Yes.
Consent agenda approved by unanimous vote.
Moving on to our resolutions. Resolution R21-157 is from Utilities. It is a resolution to accept a non-standard agreement for Manager Plus for continued use by the Utilities Department, and authorize the city administrator to enter into said agreement. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor He.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R21-158 is from Fire. It is a resolution to accept a non-standard agreement from AcuMed Billing Incorporated, and authorize the city administrator to enter into an updated billing service agreement with AcuMed Billing Incorporated to bill patients for emergency services. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support, Gauss.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor He.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R21-159 is from the Police. It is a resolution to authorize the expenditure of American Rescue Funds to sponsor three academy recruits. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments?
Sorry, give me a second to get these glasses un-pogged so I can see. All right, William Garcia, 704 Comstock Street, Adrian, Michigan. This ordinance is very understandable for reasons that have been long discussed. But I would like to take a moment for our, for our commission to consider what these new members of our law enforcement personnel are going to be asked to do. Because we have failed as a community to invest in adequate homeless services, these law enforcement officers are going to be asked to be homelessness outreach. Because we have failed to invest in the appropriate social services, our law enforcement personnel, including these new recruits, will be asked to be playing roles in our community that they have not been trained to participate in, that they have not been best equipped to participate in. And that's not an indictment of them. However, it is absolutely imperative that when we think about public safety in our community, that we consider a holistic approach to this initiative, and that initiatives like this are only one step in an entire process of things that are required to exist within a community to keep our people safe from harm. When we have people in our community who do not have adequate housing, that is a, that is a public safety issue. When we have people in our community who do not have access to good job opportunities, that is a public safety issue. When we have people in our community who do not have access to the things they need to get by, that is a public safety issue. And when, and as someone who's lived in our community my entire life, there's a bit of a song and dance to it, where we look at an issue like mental health, which these officers are going to be asked to, are going to be asked to respond to. And we say, well, that tends to be more of a health, mental health authority issue or a state issue. And you look at a situation like good-paying jobs in our community, which is absolutely a public safety problem. And we say, well, that's an economic development thing, there's organizations for that. And we look at these other forms of dysfunction that exist within our community, like housing, that tends to be for our horror, that tends to be for the state agencies. Well, we can keep on doing that same old song and dance, but I implore the commission, and this is not an indictment or a criticism of anybody here, but when moving forward, that we look at these problems and that we say, you know, this same old song and dance is going to end up with us dancing with the devil. So as we think about this particular ordinance, and we think about the way we approach public safety long term, I would implore every member of the commission to come to the table to think about the social determinants of public safety, and making sure that we provide the resources people in our community need, so that we can keep our whole community safe. And if that has not been the historical role of city government, maybe it's time to change that. I yield my time, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Vince Summer, Chief of Police. Only wanted to add to my memo there that we ask each cadet sign a five-year commitment to the city, so that when we train and sponsor them, and they come out ready to go to work, that they don't just resign and go somewhere else. Special thanks to City Attorney Galulie for reviewing that document. That's becoming quite the norm in our line of work right now, so. We have not been immune to the turnover that the workforce is experiencing all over. We had another resignation this morning, so we're trying to recover as best we can. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor He.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R21-160 is from Administration. It is a resolution to approve stipulation to the proposed judgment in the matter of Sokowski versus the city of Adrian, and authorizes the interim city attorney to execute such a stipulation on behalf of the city. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Gauss.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Hell. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor He.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
It is now time for a public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address. We will begin public comment first inside city chambers. Once there is no more public comment, I will then open it up for Zoom participants. Thank you.
Hello, Keen Ramos, 422 South Winter Street, homeowner in Adrian, lifelong resident of Adrian. I'm sure you all missed hearing from me in the last meeting. So here I am again, and I have a few things. One, I still don't really like the consent agenda. I get why you did it. I still don't really like it. When I come to a meeting, when I've ran for office, when I run meetings, I assume they're going to take a little while, and I free up time in my schedule to deal with that. It just seems like the responsible, reasonable thing to do. So I still don't like it, I make sure you know it. I also don't really like the three-minute time limit. Again, I get it, you don't want to hear someone going on for 15 minutes. Neither do I, whether it be one of you or be it a resident. I don't really want to hear that for 15 minutes. But three minutes still seems excessively short for me. But you made your decision, I hope you guys will change it. I know that I definitely would. Three minutes is just too short. And then, probably what you expected, and you'll be receiving an email about very soon, of Second Fridays, Friday, of course, which would be this Friday. We'll be at Parish Park, 6:00 PM, and we'll be doing our Halloween, October 2nd, Friday, probably our last one outdoors, as it's getting cold out. And I'm just welcoming you all and all members of the public to come and visit this community event held by the All About Adrian Resident Coalition, A3 for short. I'm the chair of that, in case you weren't familiar with that by this point. So I hope to see many of you there. I hope that you will be at our later ones, since they will be even easier. Once it gets cold out, we'll be on Zoom regularly for our Second Fridays. So if you're not able to make in-person, just get on Zoom and let us know that you're actually paying attention. And then, next up, I would like to let you know about another one of A3's events. I'm sure you're shocked. But we will be doing something for Halloween, a bit of a trunk-or-treat, but probably without the vehicles, so that we don't have all the exhaust and whatnot, and so that we can actually go ahead and use Parish Park. And we're still kicking around, but maybe this will get some interest. We will be, we are considering having some sort of award for the best decorated table. Halloween, and of course, we also consider maybe having something for the best costume. So hope to see you there. You don't have to come in costume, though you're definitely welcome to. I will be there in costume. And we'll be handing out candy. We offer invitation to most anyone who would like to come and give out candy to come and do so. If you contact me ahead of time, we may even be able to get it to your table. So I hope to see many of you there at both of these events.
Can you give the date of that, please?
That would be October 29th at 5:00 PM for A3's Halloween. And for Second Friday, in case you're not aware, that is 6:00 PM, both of these at Parish.
Again, William Garcia, 704 Comstock Street. I wanted members of the commission to be informed that this past Saturday, myself and a group of volunteers from the Huron Valley DSA knocked on approximately 120 doors of renters throughout our community to learn more about the state of rental housing in our community. And what we heard was incredibly concerning, and frankly, is a public health and public safety crisis, which I'm sure people were potentially aware of already. Some of the things that were commonly cited as going on in our rental properties is a refusal from landlords to spray for pests, including bedbugs and roaches. And for, in some cases, up to for five years, that tenants had reported, living in that condition. Additional issues that were commonly cited were problems with indoor plumbing, including members of our community having gone eight months without access to a restroom. These sorts of concerns were common. When we look at the state of rental housing in our community and the state of housing in our community in general, it is clear that this is an incredibly large-scale issue. This is frankly a crisis. There's no better word for it. And the social services agencies that we have in our community are ill-equipped to manage this crisis, even if they are managing the best that they can. I would continue to implore the commission, and I'm more than happy to reach out and assist if there's any sort of brainstorming anyone needs to do, to continue to aggressively pursue this issue. I know that there is movement on code enforcement at that angle. The scale of the problem is probably beyond one enforcer. So there are things that we absolutely can do, including assisting tenants with navigating escrow. Those are, there are programs like that throughout the state of Michigan, assisting tenants in learning their legal rights. Again, those are programs that exist throughout the state of Michigan. There are things that we need to do in order to keep people from harm, to keep our community safe, because these conditions are just eight months without going, eight months without a restroom. How does that work? Do you walk up, go to Sunoco? I mean, how does that, how does that work? And this is the sort of situation that is occurring chronically in the most marginalized parts of our community. So I'm more than happy to be part of the solution, but it is clear that there is a very, very serious problem, and we need to act. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment. Inside the city chambers, I will now open it up for all Zoom participants, and you will see the time displayed on your screen as well to help you with the time limit.
Ken Tokars, 110 South Locust. This past weekend, I researched all of the Lenawee County Commissioners and the supervisors and mayors of all surrounding cities and municipalities in Lenawee County, and this is the letter that I sent them. The Phoenix proposal is a great project for the city of Tecumseh, and as such, is a project that should be fully funded by Tecumseh and Tecumseh voters, and not Lenawee County and Lenawee County voters. Logistically, Tecumseh is not centrally located in Lenawee County, which subsequently increases travel distances for county residents in areas such as Hudson, Morenci, and Woodstock. In addition to this, the proposed location has the potential to inevitably serve a large percentage of residents from Washtenaw and Monroe County, again, identifying this more as a city of Tecumseh project and not a county project. Livonia, Michigan, and Canton, Michigan built their own community-specific complexes. A county project like this should be centrally located in the county, and a potential, potential location would be Heritage Park in Adrian Township, which already has soccer fields, baseball diamonds, trails, and Stubbit Center. Another option would be to strategically locate facilities throughout the county, an ice rink in Hudson, a swimming pool in Adrian, an activity center in Tecumseh, and a meeting place in Woodstock. My other concern is specific to the site selection process that was used by the county. I would like to think of the county in terms of an entity similar to Amazon, going through a site selection process for a new processing center, and interviewing prospective municipalities. In the same manner, the council, the county should give all counties, Lenawee community counties, an opportunity to bid on the project. Let's open the proposals publicly and be transparent. Evaluate what each city township or, or village will contribute in terms of dollars to get a specific facility or the whole complex built in their community. I'm quite sure that there are a lot of other communities out there who could find the volunteers to staff and operate the Phoenix project. I yield my time.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am a member of the Erase the Stigma Race Board, and I would like to thank all of the volunteers and donors and sponsors who came out along with the schools, both Adrian College, Siena Heights, and Adrian Public Schools that brought a lot of students that came to run and/or walk the race. We had over 700 people run, runners and walkers about eight days ago. It was a great event and a wonderful morning, and would just like to thank everyone for doing that, especially our leader, Greg Adams, who could not be here tonight. So, thank you, Greg.
Commissioner Gauss?
This is an easy question for Mr. Ramos. You talked about the events that are going to be happening with the A3 Coalition. Did you intentionally omit the cook-off on the 16th, or is that not occurring?
Unfortunately, due to some planning constraints, normally the cook-off takes about three months to prepare. We just don't have that much time in two weeks. So unfortunately, we will be postponing that, and I assure you, all of you will know when it is. Hopefully, we have a couple of you to be there.
Thank you.
Hearing no more commissioner comments, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Strayer and Commissioner Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.